Don't get sick and sticks her out.
I also want to let you know that if you are here for the Eagleview conditional use hearing that was continued from last month. We will be doing that separately after this board of supervisors meeting adjourns. So if you're here specifically for comments or feedback, if you could just wait until we open that hearing. That would be the most appropriate time for you to be on the record. I'll go ahead and ask if there's a motion for approval of the January 8th and February 5th meeting minutes.
So moved.
I will second. Is there any comment? Any public comment? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I also want to note that the Board of Supervisors met in executive session on January 16th, January 29th, February 1st, and February 12th to discuss personnel matters, police contract negotiations, and land acquisition. And we'll go ahead and move into the reports. And first I will ask for the Euclid Township Police Department report.
Hello. So the month of January 2024, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,069 entries in the Police Department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued 93 traffic citations. They investigated 26 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 19 individuals. Additionally, for the month of January, the department members conducted three motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in 808 commercial vehicle, motor vehicles being weighed, five of which were found to be overweight. During the details, the officers also performed 19 inspections, requiring five vehicles to be placed out of service. Wearing into one of these details, the officers were assisted by members of the Upper Euclid Police Department, another Providence Police Department, and the Pennsylvania State Police.
Thank you. And the Treasurers report?
Hi, good evening. Through the month of January, in the general fund, we've collected just over 5% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just over 8% of our budgeted expenditures. And I did want to mention that even though I don't have the December numbers totally finalized, we should be able to make a transfer about $1.8 million into our capital improvement fund in for 2023.
Great, thank you. Public Works?
Thank you. The daily average flow to the downtown treatment plant for the month of January 2024 was approximately 2,21,946 gallons per day. There were no new connections to either the Dara or the Eagleby wastewater treatment plant. For the month of January, the township received 3.1 inches of rain. Year to date, we are at 6.81 inches for the township. Currently, we are about 3.71 inches up for the 2024. I did just want to mention because there is a forecast for some potential winter weather tomorrow. Currently between 0 and 12 inches, it's predicted for Euclid Township. But please, obviously, when you're out in the roads, please let our crews clear the roadways. Hopefully, this is a quick melting storm. I wanted to give a quick update on the North Milford Road Culvert project that is currently underway. We are currently anticipating that project to be done hopefully by the end of next week. That's weather permitting. Unfortunately, the weather is not cooperating right now, so we will post updates to that project to the township website as there are updates to to give out. I also wanted to give an update on the Peck Road Culvert project, which also has Peck Road temporarily closed. We are anticipating that project lasting through the end of March. Hopefully, by then, that will be completed there again, weather permitting, so that could extend into April. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a Fire Marshal's report for this month?
Yes, the Building Department for the month of January issued 97 permits for construction activities. A total of 91 inspections were conducted. Five fire code inspections were conducted, three annual hotel license inspections were conducted, and 32 use and occupancy certificates were issued. The Fire Marshal also responded to 24 incidents during working hours and conducted one burning complete investigation. Also, for the annual report for 2023, we worked pretty hard on gathering all this information. The Building Department issued 1,068 permits for construction activities. 576 of those were building permits. We also did 157 resale inspections, which was down 32% from 2022, and conducted 320 rental inspections. Just for some numbers.
Great, thank you. Is there a Lineville Fire Company report?
Lineville Fire Company responded to 61 incidents during the month of January. 36 of those were in Euclid, 11 in Upper Euclid, four in West Plaquenil, and 10 in other municipalities, for a total of 61 total responses so far for 2024. And then line officers for 2024. The chief is Michael Estralis, the deputy chief is Michael Lamb. The assistant chief is Michael Holmes, the battalion chief is Bill Minahan. Captain is William Barant. The lieutenant is Jim McFadden. Lieutenant Daniel Chapman. Lieutenant Stuart Solomon and Fire Police Captain is Jack Slajewski. Administrative officers for 2024, the president is Mark Hall. Vice President is James Jarvey, Secretary Robert Kagle, Treasurer Lee Ruth, and the Financial Secretary is Carlos Martinez.
Great, thank you. Is there someone here from Euclid Ambulance? Want to come up to the microphone? So we can all hear?
Lieutenant Weigle from Euclid Ambulance. We responded to 470 calls last month, 158 of them were in Euclid, 171 of them, West Whiteland. Our main station responded 225 calls, our station in West Whiteland, 176 calls, and our Upper Euclid station responded to 69 calls. We had 318 transports.
Great, thank you. All right, any questions or comments from the Board of Supervisors?
No, I've none.
Any comments from the public? All right. I'll go ahead and move that we accept the reports as reported.
A second.
All right, any, all in favor? Motion passes. All right, moving along to the business portion of our meeting. Number one, we have an update from the Chester County Library.
Hi.
Hello. So I lied. I told you guys last time that it wouldn't be me, but it is. So hi again, my name is Stephanie Sharon Missinelli, and a few of the updates that we have is are at a glance, if I can give you sheets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've brought in over 380,000 patrons into our building last year, which is up more than 20%. We have saved our patrons over $251,000 with our Museum Pass program. We've obtained a lot of new items, including a library of things, board games, accessibility devices, hold-it lockers, and a bike repair station. We have also welcomed our first maker in residence and first teen artist in residence. And on the back of this sheet, there's a bunch of lovely comments from Euclid Township patrons. And then we are also holding a legislative breakfast on Friday, April 5th to celebrate all the libraries in Chester County, and we have invitations for you guys.
Thank you so much. All right, moving along to number two, we have a presentation from PFM regarding municipal financing options.
Hi, how's it going? Good to see everyone. I was here last week to give a report on our plans for a borrowing that will be covering a purchase of some open space that the township is considering. We have one change to this presentation I made last week, just a little adjustment to the borrowing amount. So I'm just going to run through kind of who we are, what we do, and how the process should work. Since this has been a number of years since the township is gone and issued any debt for any kind of public use. We, our job is to serve as a municipal advisor for local governments, so we work with many of the townships, boroughs, school districts, the county, the state. We're going to cover almost everyone throughout this state itself. Our job is to work as a fiduciary to help you with this process, to get our best foot forward, to give you the best transaction possible, and ultimately get you the lowest interest rates to make this as affordable as possible for you and the taxpayers. So I'm going to cut, run through a couple pages here. What we're planning on doing is issuing municipal bonds to cover this purchase. The understanding is there is a purchase of approximately $5 million for an open space project, as well as potentially some future opportunities over the next six months or so. The expectation is we'll borrow a total of about $6 million, which will cover the cost of issuance, the related other costs, and then, of course, the acquisition of those things, as well as potentially any upgrades that you may do to the properties itself. The decision on when we're going to do that will happen in about a month from now. There'll be some discussion tonight about something called an ordinance. That is a legal document that essentially authorizes the debt issuance itself. Unlike other ordinances that you prepare, we have to follow certain rules that the Commonwealth require. This is through something called the Local Government and Debt Act, which essentially is the rules and conditions for all issuers in Pennsylvania to borrow funds. As long as we meet the standards of this act, we can proceed with this type of debt transaction. This will be considered non-electoral debt, which essentially means that the supervisors are making the decision on behalf of the residents. However, in the future, if there is future purchases, we may use some other methods of how this will be done, either electoral or other ways. For tonight, we want to run through the analysis itself and tell you how the process would work. In general, interest rates are not a bad place right now, and we've all probably heard about the, you know, mortgage rates going up, 10-year treasury rates going up, the Fed raising rates. Well, the bond market, you can turn to the next couple pages, by the way, didn't say you do that. So market itself has been pretty good for local governments these days. For issuers with drawn credit, we've been doing some bond issues just to start this year, and we're probably in the 3% range right now. Far lower than what we're seeing in the 10-year US Treasury, which is somewhat unique in this market where we can actually borrow at lower rates than we can invest. And that is definitely not something we've, I've seen over the last 20 years. In that standpoint, the opportunity here is when we borrow these funds, you will be using them to pay for an open space acquisition. So you won't have the money very long. The good news is more than likely, when you get this money, you can kind of earn as much as you're paying until you end up obviously paying it to the, to the sellers at this point. As we talked about, the considerations that we're going to have here are to follow these rules that the local government and the debt act stipulates, one of which is a borrowing base calculation. It just means that the township has to follow essentially a credit calculation to make sure that you have the affordability to borrow the amount of money that you're going to, you know, ultimately do. And we certainly believe that you're going to fit within those standards under the, under the rules. So Bucky, who will be here talking a little bit later about the process on the debt side, his job is to serve as a bond counsel here, and he'll provide necessary opinions and ultimately do the filings to the Commonwealth itself. So as long as we follow those rules, we'll be fine. Couple things we're going to think about is this is going to be a municipal bond issue. This is unlike, you know, you and I just going to your local bank and saying, hey, I'd like to borrow $5 million. In this case, we're going to go to the, to the market, we're going to have investors want to decide to purchase your bonds and ultimately provide them to the, the public, hedge funds, insurance companies, those type of thing. We believe the creditworthiness of the township will be quite high, so we think we'll get pretty strong interest rates. With a bond issue, traditionally, we can traditionally go over a 30-year period. What we're expecting here is will be a 20-year payback, which is, I would say, the right spot to be in. I think the affordability for the township will be fine. I think, given the yield curve itself, that that's a good place to be and what we've seen investor strength. You can turn to the next page. I'll just skip to this, really the last part here. This consideration here is going to be less than $10 million. And for issuers like you, when you have that, it's called bank qualified. And all that means is the investors that are going to borrow your, provide you the funding for this, they get a special tax credit. So when they have that special tax credit on the interest that you're going to pay, they're going to pass on that savings to you, which just means that if you're bank qualified, meaning issuing $10 million less in the calendar year, you'll get lower interest rates than you would if you borrowed more than $10 million. And secondarily, we would be able to issue the debt with what is called a five-year call provision, which all that means is we will have the right at our option, five years or later, to refinance the debt if there's an interest rate availability to reduce the debt service. So that's on your side here. So those two things have a lot of value, and that's why we want to do this less than $10 million. You can turn to the next page. Finally, just touching on, on the debt service itself. This is a little different than last week. We've increased the amount for purposes of discussion tonight, based on some discussion we had with administration. This is showing a $6 million deposit for, for construction fund. So the big difference between this and what I just last showed you was the amount of debt service goes up because you're already borrowing more. So as our expected debt service would be about $425,000 per year. I think this is a conservative estimate, but our plan here is, once we go to the public markets, we'll know exactly what our payments are going to be. But for purposes of this discussion tonight, that's the estimate that we're going to pay from a principal and interest over the next 20 years. I touch on some other things on this page, but we're going to talk about in the future some other ways that we may do this for any future open space acquisition that may be considered either through electoral, through referendum, or, you know, utilizing an EIT. Those things we'll talk about when we're kind of building a plan here. This particular circumstance, we're going to do this as a, a non-electoral debt, which is very normal for Pennsylvania standards. Turn to the next page. So just from a timeline, obviously, we're here tonight discussing this in the public. We're going to ask you tonight to, to consider an authorization for the advertisement. Because of these requirements under DCED, we need to advertise within three days of your, of a board meeting. So this asking for tonight is to allow us to put that advertisement in the local paper, and then we would come back with the formal ordinance. There's been a draft prepared by Bucky. We haven't filled in all the numbers just yet, but it's pretty standard for the type of requirements that we have from state guidelines. Once we get that advertisement in, we're actually going to finish up and do the bond rating, which will happen in about a week from now. We'll prepare this rating process with your administration, and we'll get that rating back probably over the next couple of weeks, hopefully with a very strong result. And then we'll prepare the necessary documents to get us ready to sell bonds. What's nice here is we're going to work fast enough and efficiently that we're going to come back at your meeting on March 11th with a formal proposal in hand, locked in interest rates from an underwriter. Not for who that is just yet. We're going to go through a competitive process. So on the 11th, assuming everyone's comfortable with this, we'll come back with that formalized ordinance with the hard numbers in there, and you'll know exactly what your payments are going to be and the exact interest rate. That'll be the considerations at that night, that board meeting that night. Once that happens, we wait about a month, and the money is available to us. So we're sent you by April 15th, you'll have your money, and you can use it for purposes of the acquisition. So I'll stop. I know I did a lot of talking there, but I know we went, ran through this previously, and certainly, Bucky, I probably stole most of this thunder as I normally do.
Yeah, let's be reprimanded, Jamie. Good job of summarizing the process, and we did prepare a draft ordinance. The one action item this evening is authorization advertised out, so we can re-repair at the next meeting, as Jamie said, too, with a few of the, uh, debt ordinance for your consideration.
Any other questions?
No. I don't have any.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate your presentation in our workshop meeting last week, as well as putting this together, certainly for the public to see what's, what's up. You don't have any questions or comments?
I do not, no.
Are there any public comments? Nope. Nope.
We'll see you in a month.
Absolutely.
Part to do with the administration, but they'll do a great job.
Thank you so much. All right, we will move along to number three, which is appointments. First up, we have a Planning Commission appointment.
Make a motion to appoint Laura Cisco as to the Planning Commission.
I will second that motion. Any comments or questions?
No, other than I think she bought very good qualified candidate.
Absolutely, and I appreciate all of the applications and interviews that we completed. I like to have, it's, it's heartening to see a positive response to opportunities to volunteer in the township, and so it's been fun getting to know more of our Euclid Township neighbors, and I look forward to Laura Cisco's input on our Planning Commission. Any public comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. B, the Industrial Development Authority.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Fratell to the Industrial Development Authority.
I will second that motion. Any comments or questions? We'll just
Also qualified.
Repeat what I said for the first. Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And our third appointment of the evening, our representative to the Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium, also known as DARK.
I'll make a motion to appoint Peg McCrery.
McCrery or? McCory.
McCory, I apologize. McCory to the Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium.
I will second that motion. Any comments or questions?
No.
From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, moving along to number four, permission to advertise. First, we have an ordinance to establish a township bond for the acquisition of open space.
Yes, we must have this laid out perfectly to just go right into the permission to advertise, but I apologize. So this is coming off of Jamie and Bucky's presentation. This was the ordinance that they mentioned that we would be advertising for our meeting in March.
All right, I make a motion to grant permission to advertise for the ordinance to establish a township bond for the acquisition of open space.
I will second that. Any comments or questions from the board?
Not for me.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Permission to advertise B, bid for the police storage garage.
Right, so this is a project that we've been working on for some years now. One of the building limitations that the township has is storage, and we are viewing this project, it's not only a way to help store some police vehicles to get them out of the elements, and as well as storage for the Police Department, as well as the administration. So what I'm requesting permission for this evening is to work with EB Walsh and getting the bid out for this project so that we can get a better idea of what this is going to cost the township.
I'll make a motion to permit advertisement for the bid for the police storage garage.
I will second that motion. Any comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving along to number five, awarding of the bid for the Township Street Sweeping Program.
Yes, so the township received two bids for Township Street Sweeping for 2024. Those bids included Sweeping Corporation of America, as well as leasing property service and power sweeping. After careful review by EB Walsh, you are recommending that the project be awarded to Sweeping Corporation of America in the amount of $18,901. $18,901.
I'll make a motion to award the bid for the Township Sweep Program, Street Sweeping Program to Sweeping Corporation of America at the amount stated.
I will second that motion. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number six, traffic signal maintenance contract with Signal Service, Inc.
Yes, so this is a typical agreement that we enter to with Signal Services. They've been providing a signal support for years. This will be for 2024 through 2026 for two years.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the traffic signal, traffic signal maintenance contracts with Signal Service Incorporated.
I will second that. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And number seven, ordinance 2024-01, establishing township sewer rates.
Thank you. So when, as we completed the budget process last year, we did mention that unfortunately, we had to look at increasing sewer rates for the township. At that time, we had proposed a $6 increase, which would take us to $105 per quarter for both the Dara and the Eagleby wastewater treatment system. So we had previously passed the fee schedule for the township, which reflected this. What we're asking the, the Board of Supervisors for this evening is to pass this ordinance so that we can update the actual fees, which are specifically listed in our township code.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-01, establishing the Township Superrates.
I will second that. Any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, moving along to our announcements for this evening. All meetings will be at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. Coming up on February 15th, we have the Environmental Advisory Council Workshop Meeting at 7:00 PM. February 19th, on President's Day, the Township offices will be closed. February 21st, the zoning hearing board will be meeting to discuss a front yard variance request at 12 Andover Drive. March 4th, the Board of Supervisors March 4th, the Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting will be held here at the Township at 12:00 P M. Also on March 4th, the Parks and Recreation Meeting will be held at 7 o'clock P M. On March 6th, the Planning Commission will be meeting here at 7:00 P M. And on March 11th, the Board of Supervisors will be meeting here at 7:00 P M. At this time, I'm going to open up to the public for comments and I'm going to go down our list of people that we have signed in here. I have Rose Dulittle, is this in regards to the Eagleview? Okay, so we'll just hold on. I'll come to you last. Let me just make it out here. Tony Gorkin also for Eagleview. Mr. Jonas Ryan Holdson. If you could come up to the microphone.
State my name and address?
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonas Reinholdson, 451 Concord Avenue. All right, so over the last several months, I've been attempting to have an ordinance concerning the the rear setback restrictions of accessory structures reviewed and amended. And I've been met with what I feel is unjustified and unsubstantiated resistance. When I initially inquired about the building permit required for putting up a shed that's more than 120 square feet near the rear property line. I was told it needed to be at least 50 feet back. And when I asked why it needed to be so far into the yard, I was told that they didn't know as the ordinance was put in place in the early 90s. So I decided to do a bit of research to make sure that it wasn't due to any health and safety concerns, which it isn't. And I presented that to the board during a previous open comment period. And after that, the zoning office and board gave me the following justifications. It may cause issues with stormwater runoff. It infringes on neighbors' property rights, it's imposing. And my absolute favorite, this is not a priority of theirs, so look into this. So first, part of the billing permit process to have one of the in-house experts review each proposal. At which point they can use their expertise and discretionary authority to determine if the proposal can cause stormwater runoff. Issues amongst many other potential issues that may arise. Additionally, if I'm not mistaken, there's a formula that uses the total impervious surface to determine stormwater runoff limits. But instead, we're choosing to say no first and then put the burden of proof on the homeowners to prove they won't negatively impact the community. To me, this seems backwards. And then the second reoccurring theme is that this infringes on neighbors' property rights and it is imposing. And I'm not asking to put my shed five feet into my neighbor's yard, that would absolutely be infringing on their property. In fact, I'm not even asking to put it right on the property line. I understand that if there needs to be maintenance done on the structure, you would need to be on your neighbor's property. And that would become an infringement, however, if it's at least five feet back from your own property line. That gives you enough space to get a ladder and maybe even some tools to perform any required maintenance. The only persons property rights that's being infringed upon are those homeowners that wish to secure a structure while retaining as much open yard space. As far as being imposing, the legal definition is to force someone to do something, which isn't the case in this matter. And then the other definition is that something is grand and impressive in appearance. Other than being subjective, it seems to me that something that is imposing would remain imposing, whether it's five feet from the property line or 50 feet from the property line. And then the last response that that again was that this is not a priority. So the reason I'm wanting to put a shed in my yard is because I don't have a garage. And my basement is currently acting as a storage area and I want to clear it out to get it finished and put another bedroom down in the basement. So I can move forward with an adoption process to remove underprivileged kids out of a bad situation. Now, if that isn't your priority, priority, that's fine, you know, there's you have your own prerogative, there's no judgment. However, when you freely volunteer to represent me and every one of the people behind me, our priorities become your priorities. And right now, my priority is in having the question answered, why 50 feet? Is makes sense and how does it help?
Ryan, your three minutes are up, if you could just conclude your comment, please.
Okay, I'll conclude with this statement from Mr. Miller from. Let me see. Mr. Miller in regards to the setback being 50 feet and he states, I actually do think they might be too much. And this was from the July 10th Board of Supervisor, Supervisors Public Comment Period.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Next, I have Alexa Manning on the list. Are you for Eagleview? Okay. Did you, I know, I know you said he didn't get your name on for Eagleview, okay. Okay, that's all I have on my list for this evening's public comment. Can you come up to the microphone just so you're on the record?
I have three minutes.
Yeah.
How can I need that?
Ben Grayson, 106 Nalen Court. While I feel that the decision made regarding Gray Farm was wrong and sets a bad precedent. I want to make clear my support of Euclid Township Supervisors, Mr. Freed. Who overall been doing a great job. I want to make that clear. While we can vehemently disagree on that choice. We can still respect one another and respect the process you went through. Still not convinced was the right choice, but I wanted to make it clear. I was going to write this down as a letter, I thought I wanted to do this in a public setting. So everybody could see really what I think of the board. Now that said, I represent probably as my role as president of Ronda HOA. I represent probably a full 10% of the Euclid Township residents. They're making their voices heard. And we're still very much engaged with what's going on. Now, lastly, one of the things that I would like to set forth to board is maybe we need a change in ordinances or rules or whatever it is. We never heard directly about what was going on over there. We discovered the project almost by accident. What I would ask the board is if we can set some sort of rule that states that anytime there's going to be a project that requires this kind of input from the township. Maybe there needs to be official way of having all the neighboring properties to be officially notified of what's going on. So we can be a part of the process from step one. Whether it's a registered email, whatever the process is. I know that there are some situations where things need to be put into newspapers or whatever. Today's world, a lot of those rules are really kind of old fashioned. An email to the owner would go a long way. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Could I, Madam Chair, could I just ask the zoning officer? In what situations would would an adjacent property owner get notice that either through land development or zoning or something along those lines? When would they actually get something in the mail?
Only if there is a conditional use hearing or a zoning hearing are we required to notify the abutting property owners.
Okay.
I would suggest signing up on our website for notifications.
So if it's land use, for instance, it would like, and I get talking specifically about Gray Farm and the development back when it came through. It was advertised, it actually it came here, it was then sent to the planning commission. Right to be considered as part of land development?
Yes, there was never a hearing for Gray Farm.
Not not a hearing, I'm just saying about the public getting getting notice.
It would have been posted on the agendas for the planning commission and Board of Supervisors.
And then ultimately up here, okay. But and and actually you raised a good point too, there is, the township does have an email distribution system for certain things.
We've come a long way since that. It's kind of first submitted as far as our website and web presence, thanks to Juliet over here. But we are talking internally about ways, just because we've seen over time of how to proactively get information out because that's why we've invested in all of this technology. So we're going to continue to talk internally about making sure people are aware of what's going on around them. But until then, I would definitely check out Euclid.com, sign up for our news alerts. We're pushing stuff out quite regularly now.
Yeah, your points are really good and I know the board, I know that one of their priorities is transparency, getting the information out and figuring out new ways to put the information out. So it's a very, it's a good and valid point.
Thank you, I've signed up for a lot of the states.
Right, understood.
Yeah, and even in that, a lot of the agendas, you know, it's a one line, really just being talked about.
All right, we appreciate that feedback, thank you. All right, is there an emotion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Why don't we take like a three minute break and then we will go ahead and start with the conditional use hearing for the Eagleview Market at Town Center? Thank you. You have?
Yeah. I still know. Thanks for asking. Because a lot of the state people. 11:30 now, we usually just begin. That's very small.
Thank you, thank you.
Very welcome.
But I mean, first of all. I had so many things to say. By the set that's
Good, good, good. Great. You're the most important person here, so we gotta make sure. That's right.
Just yelling, you know, it's fine.
I read through the, I read through the transcript, that was great, you put in, I like when you put in your own, hey, hey, hey.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the continued hearing for the Hankin Group. Eagleview Market at Town Center. Before we get into things, I know we have some public here to speak tonight. If there's consensus with the board, I would like to make sure everyone has time to give their comments, even if that means maybe not adhering strictly to the three minute public comment policy. However, since there's a lot of us, I would just ask that we not be redundant. You, it's fine to agree with someone else that has already made a comment. And just be mindful of everyone's time here tonight. Does that sound okay with everyone? Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Freed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is a continuation of the conditional use hearing on the Eagleview Town Center. And master concept plan. Following up on on the chairwoman's comments regarding comment and that we're not going to be strictly adhering to the three minutes for the purpose of this conditional use when we get to comments. I would ask that if folks, you know, if you've already heard your comments said just because of the number of people here, so that we're not redundant. If it's in the record, it doesn't have to be repeated, it doesn't mean that you can't repeat it if it's something that you want to put emphasis on, but just be conscious of that. We do have two requests for party status. I don't know if that's changed now in light of the fact that we've loosened, no, you still want party status. Okay, or you don't? Yes, so we have party status from a, or less from a Mr. Steve Bayless. Do you want to come forward?
Steve Bales, 603 Perimeter Drive, live in the Eagleview neighborhood.
And did you receive written notice of the hearing in?
Saw the public notice on the side of the road.
Okay, and does the applicant have any objection to Mr. Bale's party status? So do you know about how far you are from the the your residence is from the location of the proposed construction?
I was told by the Hankin Group that I'm approximately a quarter mile away.
Okay.
And I would agree with that.
Yeah, and I and I would too, I actually took a look at it a little earlier today and I think that's and that's right. I am, if if the board's okay with it, I would recommend granting party status to Mr. Bayless. In a quarter mile, it's it's, they're certain when you're dealing with standing, particularly in front of a, the Board of Supervisors or Zoning Hearing Board. There's, you know, there's certain times where it's clear, yes, you're close enough that you have standing, there's certain times where it's pretty clear that no, you're far away enough that you don't have standing. You do fall into a bit of that gray area, but it seems to me close enough that I would recommend granting party status.
Thank you, Mr. Freed, I'd like to also agree with you. Perimeter Drive where I live on is a direct thoroughfare to where the market will be. So, thank you.
So if the board's okay with that, we'll grant the party status.
I'm okay with it.
We also have a request from Rose Dulittle for party status? Yeah, please. So would you please state your name and address?
Rose Dulittle, 605 Perimeter Drive, neighbor on Perimeter Drive.
Okay, so you're also about a quarter mile from the site. Any objections? Same objection. If it's okay with with the board, I'm also going to make the same recommendation regarding party status for Ms. Dulittle and granting party status.
I'm okay with granting.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right, so that's.
I haven't paid you for the standing because I didn't know, but I'm in direct line, Valdezella, 603 Huntington Drive is okay, well, can I write it down for you after or no? V A L, B E T E, and last name, C E L A J. 603 Huntington Drive is right in the corner from the market in direct line. We haven't gotten any notification, I mean, if you guys want, I can point in the screen. So, but and I want to pay for the standing or whatever it is, but I'd like to be included in that, I just didn't know about it.
So let me ask you a question, were you here at the last meeting?
No.
Okay, so let me explain very briefly what party status is and what it means and what it gives you and what you don't need it for. Party status allows you to present a case, it allows you to call witnesses. It allows you to question witnesses. If you call witnesses, they'll be allowed to be questioned by the other parties as well. You do not require party status in order to make comments. You're you're able to make, there will be a comment period at the end. So if you, if your goal is just to be able to make comments, you do not need party status. I will note, as we did the last time, that if you're not a party in front of this board. You're not going to be able to be a party if it gets appealed to the Court of Common Pleas. However, just because you're a party here doesn't necessarily mean the Court of Common Pleas is going to grant you standing. So knowing that you can still give comments, do you still want party status?
Yes.
Okay, so how how far are you from the, is your residence?
Probably not even 50 feet, 12 feet, whatever the width of the road is.
Seventy five.
Is there any objection?
Six or three hunting. Six oh three Huntington Drive is the address, but my backyard is in Wharton, literally in that corner, right corner of Wharton and Ryan.
Okay, don't.
Yeah.
All right, and, and did you receive written notice of this hearing? No, you didn't. Okay.
None of the neighbors. This was actually, I've heard about this through Grapevine, through Facebook. Nobody notified us or anything.
All right, so you'll be granted party status.
Okay, so I'll have the comments as well. Thank you.
So Ms. Zaro, if you'd like to proceed, I know you were, you were finishing with a witness. I know you might be calling a witness back and completing your, your case.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Allison Zaro on behalf of the Hankin Group this evening and the related entities of the Hankin Group that are the applicant. As the board knows, we were here last month and we commenced the application, the hearing on this application. This particular application requires conditional use approval. As the board knows, a conditional use is a permitted use in the Township zoning ordinance. And we are required to meet certain objective criteria of the ordinance in order to obtain conditional use approval. The board will remember that I put on Neil Fisher as my first witness at the last hearing. We have a couple of follow-up questions for Mr. Fisher based on the questions and discussion at the last hearing. I also have our traffic engineer, Guy Di Martino from Traffic Planning and Design, and Eric Hetzel is here as well. He is the consultant who prepared the fiscal impact study for this conditional use application. So just to give a brief overview, as I know we have some folks here that were not here last month probably. The Town Center itself is permitted by conditional use in Euclid Township zoning ordinance. And so the first thing we are doing is requesting a change to that conditional use, which has historically been changed numerous times for, as, as Town Center's been built out, and that's to allow the proposed Kimberton Whole Foods with, which is approximately fourteen thousand square feet, and over top of that, three levels of apartments for a total of forty-one units. One item I will note related to that, last month, we talked about the overall project elevations, what it's going to look like, et cetera. There was a question about landscaping and Hankin would be willing to increase both the height and caliper of various landscaped, you know, areas around that, specifically trees, deciduous, increased the caliper height of evergreen trees. That's just, and something I wanted to note. The second thing that we were seeking conditional use approval for specifically is for the height of this building. There are taller buildings in Eagleview Town Center, and we are allowed to seek an increase in height. This one would be fifty-three feet, which again is not the tallest building in Eagleview. And you are allowed to go up to sixty-five feet in height, so long as you meet certain objective criteria in the ordinance, which we provided testimony about last month. The third conditional use item is to reduce parking that would be initially constructed by up to twenty percent. And if the board recalls, last month, we talked about seeking a reduction specifically as it with respect to non-residential units, which is historically what has been done in Town Center. However, as part of that discussion and the reason why I want to have Mr. Fisher be recalled, and then also we'll have test, detailed testimony from our traffic engineers, that was, there was discussion about is there a better way to even improve pedestrian connectivity, potentially reduce the parking even further? So tonight, we will present testimony that would we'd be requesting from the board an overall ten percent reduction. Your ordinance allows you to go up to twenty percent, but a ten percent reduction in the overall parking that would be initially built and constructed in Town Center. As the board knows, there are, you know, quite a number of parking spaces out there already, but this would factor in the additional parking that would be required for both the market and the additional apartments. And then finally, the last conditional use is a general conditional use requirement in your ordinance, not specific to the PCID district where this property is located. Your ordinance requires any parking area of over two hundred spaces to obtain conditional use approval. As I just noted, the parking is already over two hundred spaces, but historically that has been requested and blessed as Town Center has been built out. So I do have, I did hand up additional exhibits to the board. So we're going to go a little bit out of order at the last hearing. Applicant Exhibits A one through A ten were marked into the record, and I'm going to just skip over a few of those. We will come back to them, and we're going to start with Exhibit A sixteen tonight. And I would ask that Mr. Fisher be called back up, and maybe we can use the other mic if no one's using it, rather than. So sixteen is the conditional use plan, Sheet one, overall Town Center Record Plan. Dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and it has an exhibit date of February fifth, twenty twenty-four. And Mr. Fisher, I believe you were sworn last time? And you just heard my introduction. Are you seeking a modification to your request for the parking reduction?
Yes.
And specifically, what are you seeking and what are you presenting to the board this evening?
So as Allison mentioned, you know, last, last month we came in, we talked about twenty percent reduction just on the commercial space. And really, the way Town Center functions is all the use is share, right? To share the parking facilities, whether it's residential, retail, restaurants, bookstores, office space. So instead, what was, what I think would is actually more appropriate is a consistent ten percent parking reduction. And really what that does is it allows us a few additional spaces to place in reserve. Not, it's not a reduction, it's a reservation. At the end of the day, we have the full space or all the full buildout is capable, capable of occurring in Town Center from a parking standpoint. What the ten percent reduction does is it allows us a little bit of flexibility to concentrate on pedestrians. So parking spaces concentrate on vehicles. This flexibility gives us the ability to concentrate on pedestrian connections. And really primarily, I'll say, in the north-south direction. So what we did was along our pathways, whether it's centered on the square or along Wellington Square, is we took some of those parking spaces adjacent to our, our sidewalks, and we're placing those in reserve. So we can landscape them, make sidewalks wider, enhance that pedestrian experience. It also allows us to align things more, more linearly. Again, eliminating some of, some of the sarcasm kind of bends throughout that was previously in the plan. Making it again for that nicer pedestrian experience.
And we have up on the screen Exhibit A sixteen, which I just referenced what it was and the dates. Was that prepared by Chester Valley Engineers at your direction?
It was.
And does that show the updated pedestrian streets, streetscape? As well as the areas that would be held in reserve?
It does.
And then, did you also have Chester Valley Engineers prepare a conditional use use plan Sheet two, site layout plan dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, with an exhibit date of February fifth, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, we have.
And on Exhibit A seventeen, if we want to go to that slide, does that show an enlarged area of the pedestrian connectivity that you are referring to?
That's correct.
And when it loads, if you want to just walk the board briefly through what that shows.
Tara, could you just slide up a little bit? So here you can see that north-south connection right here. There are enlarged green areas associated with all of them. And basically, those are reserved parking spaces that would be landscaped. Same is occurring in that north-south on both sides here of the north-south side of Wellington Square.
And that would further complement the east-west pedestrian connectivity that you discussed with the board last time?
The east-west is really an enhanced pedestrian network, where yes, we are taking some of the existing parking spaces, placing them in reserve and providing the sidewalk connection over to that senior community that exists.
We also had, we also have marked as Exhibit A eighteen, a parking allocation plan dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with a subheading of full buildout. And Exhibit A nineteen, parking allocation plan, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with a subheading ten percent overall reduction. Were both of these also prepared by Chester Valley Engineers at your direction?
Yes, they were.
And just briefly, as we'll have Mr. Di Martino go into more detail about this, but do these show the parking allocations both at a full buildout of one thousand four hundred fifty-six spaces, as well as what you'd be proposing to develop with a straight ten percent reduction?
It does. And what it does is it colorizes the use to the parking space. So you can kind of start to see a distribution of how those, those parking spaces relate to the existing buildings.
But to clarify, in general, as you touched on, there aren't particular reserved spaces. You're just demonstrating how they could all fit on the site.
That's correct.
And then, just a couple of follow-up questions. I think we touched on this last time, but previously, this board has imposed a condition that would require you to provide the additional parking on site, i.e. the full buildout of the parking, if required. And it would also require applicable land development approval if there was, it was determined that there was insufficient parking. And that could either be, that could be in surface parking. Is that would, would you be amenable to that type of condition?
That's correct.
And then, finally, in your opinion, would the change to this ten percent reduction from the previously proposed reduction have any detrimental impact on the public health, safety, and welfare? And would it, would there still be sufficient safeguards in place to remove any detrimental impact to Town Center in the event additional parking was needed? Sorry, that was too long of a question. I was essentially asking, under, under the zoning ordinance, you have to demonstrate that there are sufficient safeguards in place related to any potential adverse impacts. Is that accomplished?
Yes.
In the, in the event that the full buildout would occur?
Yes.
I have no further questions for Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Mr. Bayless, do you have any questions based on the testimony? Ms. Doolittle? So these are questions. These are questions for the witness. Okay.
Do you need to take any notes?
No, there's a court.
Can I use the mic stand? So again, my name is Rose Doolittle. I live at six oh five Perimeter Drive in Downingtown. I did want to just start with a summary of some of my.
Yeah, so this is, this is essentially your cross-examination of the witness based on his
Lovely.
testimony?
So in terms of parking, I have a number of questions around parking, traffic and safety, density, and requests for variance, so several areas.
Can I respond to that?
I think, I think the, the traffic and parking question is probably best to wait for the traffic consultant. Density, I'm happy to talk about, and there are no variances.
Well, I understood. So we'll I, I believe the witness did testify regarding parking, so I, I think that is a fair line of questions. It may be Ms. Doolittle, based on your comment, may decide to ask a, a witness later or wait, but I think she's entitled to at least ask the questions. So why don't we do that? And then if you're open to answering the density questions as well, that's, that's fine.
Thanks. So just to confirm, I only saw the, the plans that were posted on the township site. I don't know what other documentation is made available, but based on what I could review in the sketches, the, the development plans, can you confirm from a parking perspective for the apartments that there are planned fourteen underground spaces, thirty new surface area parking spaces behind and adjacent to the new market, and an additional net fourteen spaces in the ex- existing commercial parking area?
Net of fourteen, net of fourteen from what?
From current.
Tara, could I ask you to, to pull up the site plan? Uh, last, the, the latest exhibit?
Eight sixteen?
See the numbers here. Now, actually, I just wanted to follow. Actually, Dan, yours. So we, how about this? Between the, the parking spaces that are within the garage and located outside of the building, we will have at least one parking space per unit there.
Okay.
In that location. And then as far as net, I'm not quite sure what you're comparing it to, so I'd say we comply with the zoning ordinance from that standpoint.
Sure.
Parking requirement.
Understood. I'm just doing math.
Okay.
So simple addition with current spaces in that parking area are going to be reconfigured as you described.
That's correct.
And it's a net increase of fourteen spaces by my count off of the drawing. So given the two point five cars per unit and the hundred and three cars that should be planned, that means that there, I believe, are forty-four additional spaces needed to be shared in that commercial space.
That's not correct.
Okay.
Okay, so when we built Town Center, you may, how, I'm not sure how long you lived in Eagleview. But we built Town Center, we started with the Brickside. We started with the Brickside and a thousand parking spaces. It's not that the Brickside needed a thousand parking spaces. So what we've done over time is that we've built the full buildout of parking. So the only thing that's really missing from this plan, the parking's there. The building is missing. We planned for a building in this location. We just haven't built it yet. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
I'm just saying that for the current use of that parking lot, the new spaces are greater than the amount of spaces, which is, I guess, why you're asking for a ten percent reduction in.
So the ten percent, it's not a, it's not a reduction, it's a reservation. We document from a zoning standpoint that we can meet the full requirement of park. All the uses in Town Center. What we're doing, we did, we've done, every time we come in and add a new building, we do a parking study, and the parking study actually says during peak times, we have over three hundred and fifty spaces that are sitting out here in Town Center and vacant. So because of that, nobody wants to just build more parking spaces just to have more improvience. It makes more sense to place some of those spaces in reservation. If, should a parking problem occur at some point in the future, the township could has the right to call up us, call Hankin and say, hey, we have a parking problem. You've committed to building those spaces. We need those spaces constructed.
Okay.
So it's not that they're not planned for, it's just that we're keeping them green because we don't believe they're necessary.
Okay, so in that condition of determining when there's insufficient parking, is there some kind of formula? How are you determining when insufficient is reached?
That's at the township, that's at the board's discretion.
Okay. And are we aware of definition from a township perspective on what insufficient parking is?
No, it's just time to question the witness.
Okay. Does the developer foresee a growing conflicting interest and negative consequence on the community by submitting applications to expand development while, while simultaneously requesting variances to put more parking in reserve?
No, I actually believe that the project that's being proposed is going to be an asset for not just the town center, but for the surrounding community. And there are no variances requested.
Okay, so I'm not a lawyer. Sorry if I'm using the wrong word, but you're asking for up to ten percent of the required.
I'm asking to place a certain number of spaces in reserve. We could build them. I just don't think it's going to enhance the town center or anybody's experience in town center.
Ms. Sarah, if I can just jump in for a second, that when you're dealing with a zoning issues, that's when the, the, and I know it gets a little hyper technical. That's when you get into variances. This is actually dealing with what we call the SADO or the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Right.
So to the extent they're requesting relief, the, the technical term is actually a waiver.
Okay.
So that, I think that's probably what you're asking.
Thank you. I appreciate that. For the underground parking, was there a consideration of developing a plan with more underground parking than fourteen spaces?
No, we designed what fit the site.
Okay. Is that parking access limited and controlled to the residents?
To the residents of that building?
Yes.
It is not limited, however, it realistically, the only person who would go to utilize any of those parking spaces are the residents. It's not convenient for any other use. And certainly the garage parking would be restricted.
That's right. So the garage parking, the fourteen, there's, that's like we had on apartments on the square that you can only get in if you're a resident. The thirty space, surface parking spaces though are not limited, so it's whoever wants to use them.
They're not limited, however, it's kind of, it's from a practical standpoint. Nobody will park in the rear of the building to go to the front door. It's, it's, it's really the front door of the residential building.
Yep, understood, but I can tell you they're going to park there. If that whole first row is full, that's exactly where they're going to go. Okay, so the thirty spaces are not residentially dedicated in that surface parking area. And you said the underground parking could not fit in that space. The fourteen spots are all that can be accommodated in the design?
We would have to expand the building for more underground parking.
Okay. For reference, in the previous projects, is it correct to say that for apartments on the square, there was one underground spot for every unit?
That's correct.
And for the market rate apartments that were built ten years ago, that about seventy five percent of the parking was planned underground per unit?
That is incorrect.
Okay. So a hundred and twenty underground spaces?
There are no underground spaces associated with the apartments on the square.
Okay. The age restricted?
The Meridian.
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head how many underground parking spaces that we have there.
Okay, just based on research I did in the minutes from previous board meetings, it says there were a hundred twenty assigned for that part of the development. The question on the waiver for required parking, is the interpretation for required parking a minimum required or a not to exceed maximum?
A not to exceed twenty percent.
Okay, maybe phrase the opposite way. If we were not asking for a waiver in a reduction, just to confirm the definition of required parking, is that minimum required or is that maximum needed? So you mentioned that the plan, the development plan had fourteen hundred or something spaces. Is that minimum required or is that?
That is required, what is required by the ordinance.
Ordinance, okay. So a maximum needed? It doesn't have any extra built in?
It's what's required by the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. In the application proposal, I think you mentioned that there's an exhibit around the plan for where the reserved parking that is not going to be built now is. I didn't see any of that available. Perfect. Okay, should I hold questions entirely till all of the?
Truly, it's, it's up, it's up to you, but it sounds like they are going to have another witness that may be able to better answer that.
Perfect. All right, so in the Apartments on the Square project that was approved in early twenty twenty, there was, just to confirm, a similar waiver granted to request up to a twenty percent reduction in the required commercial parking spaces, only subject to strict compliance with the conditions that follow.
New application, I don't know if any terms like
Say that, I'm sorry. What, what, what's the reason for asking about?
Reason is because there were conditions on that approval, which have not been subsequently proposed to be revised until this proposal.
So are you, are you saying that those conditions are things that you'd like to see as part of this proposal?
My question is, what is planned for those proposals that were approved back in February of twenty twenty? So there were two, there were three conditions. One is that the parking in reserve be, there's a plan to know if we have to build it out, where it's going to go. And so you mentioned that we'll hear about that from somebody else. The second is that no changes to the master plan or other amendments can be made except for what was agreed or approved in February twenty twenty, which includes an expansion to the ACAC creation facility and an outdoor recreation area subsequently referred to as a creation area.
Was, so I, I heard, I was hearing a statement, I'm, I'm, I was waiting for the question of how that related to this application.
The question is that in that approval for apartments on the square, the, one of the conditions that was supposed to be strict compliance with the conditions is that the applicants shall complete the construction within a twenty four month period. So it wasn't a menu of things. It was the proposal with those three elements that were approved. And since we now are changing the elements that we want to build on that parcel, I'm asking twenty four months has elapsed, so. Absolutely. And what was the extension date for completing all the construction?
And again, that was a conditionally used to be clear.
Again, I don't know whether I should wait for the other witness. I have lots of parking and traffic questions. I guess I can ask now and you can tell me if I should defer.
If they are parking questions, I would say we should defer.
Okay. Just to confirm in the traffic, the volume study, you mentioned that the fourteen hundred spaces is planned for the, the full build out of the, of the area. Okay, thank you. From a safety perspective, as I mentioned before, I live on Perimeter Drive, which just shoots off to the left, right next to the market center. And we do not have a designated fire lane. Is part of the plan to ensure that overflow parking that might fill up Perimeter Drive is supported by fire lane? So that's so you're saying that overflow for events and high peak areas?
Fire police onsite during events.
Yep.
An instance that happened, we actually are very well covered.
Yep, so what I mean by the fire lane is that on Perimeter Drive, if cars were parked on both sides of the road, we would have an eleven foot throughway, which is only enough for one car.
So what you're saying is that they're the, they're the parking violation. It's something that should be.
Okay. So just to understand, that's not part of what you have to deal with as a plan? Great. Regardless of the events, if there is much like some of the other areas closer to that commercial parking lot, overflow can park wherever they wish and in the residential areas. That's why I'm asking the question today. I did want to just confirm, you mentioned today again about the revised pedestrian access points. Is that something that's in the plan whether or not this project proceeds? Okay. Traffic study, oh wait. So density, I think you said, I could ask you questions. Just to confirm that since twenty eleven, when the number of dwelling units was one thousand seventy eight, with the recently approved or built projects on the square, I was talking about Eagleview as a whole, but on the square, between apartments on the square, all of the four phases of the Constitution Ave, as well as this development project, that the number would grow by about forty percent from the one thousand seventy eight. How much more is the full build out? So how many more projected? Okay.
We are at the zoning limit for this.
In town center?
You already answered, but, but you got the objection?
Okay. The main concern that I want to reiterate and make sure I have my questions answered, as I mentioned, was traffic, density, safety, parking. There's going to be a question. What are the, the parking just confirmed? You mentioned the alternate parking arrangements. Are they available, provided? Okay. Does it identify the location of the allocated spaces and where they would be built if they were, had to be built later? Okay. Is that additional parking space potentially of one hundred and forty two space parking garage? Is that still a potential that was on a previous?
The way the, the previous conditional use and signal was approved, was it in the, the option for either or?
Okay. So right now, the current proposal is surface parking.
Is surface parking, and one of the questions that Allison asked is, am I agreeable to the same type of condition that is an either or? Meaning either surface parking or parking structure? And yes, I said yes.
Okay, so either option is potentially still on the table?
Right.
As needed in the future?
That is correct.
Okay.
The plans show certain part of the full appliance.
Okay, thank you. Just to confirm, since the developer proposal here indicates a change for what will be developed on that parcel, is there an intention to build a recreational area anywhere else? And I suppose we can confirm later, but you mentioned an extension. I'd just like to understand what the extension timeframe was.
I just want to clarify the part, the part was something that we put on our previous
Okay. In a past submission, there was discussion about including perhaps a dog park and outdoor amphitheater trails, those kinds of things. Are you saying that's not? Correct, okay. For the Whole Foods market, is that being designed with flexibility to convert to other use as needed?
Be converted to other uses.
Yep, so the, the apartments?
Being designed for a
Okay. Okay. So it could be subdivided or? Okay. Last question is, you mentioned about the events and the peak demand for parking. Is there any proposal or thinking around limiting the access by reducing events, eliminating farmer's market, eliminating concerts? At this point, I know it's not a promise. I just want to understand what the plan is.
We, we enjoy events, but we, that's great for people as a whole, great for residents, they're great for a town center, they're great for this.
Great.
Like I said, it is something that we do on a regular basis with the
Sure.
When we come in, we, we put together our schedule, make sure that the attachment is agreeable and we're able with coordination to, with the league, coordination with and we're able with coordination through the league, coordination with fire police to make sure that.
Great, thank you. So I'll hold the rest of my questions until the traffic. Thank you.
Ms. Seales, any questions?
So just the.
You can.
Okay, just ask questions or?
Just questions for the witness, this is a cross examination.
Okay, alright, so you mentioned the height of the building compared to the other building.
So the wit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Closer? Is this okay?
But she didn't get.
Okay, so you, on the presentation, the height of the building was mentioned, compared with other heights of the building, other buildings in the town center. The issue is that if we look at the map, no other buildings in the town center faces residential private homes. This is the first one. And I'm sure is going to loom over those three houses in the corner and we're going to block the sun and.
So so the question would be, is that is that accurate? Is that correct? You have to ask it, try to ask it as.
Okay, ask ask the question. So the height of the building, was it ever considered in causing any infringement on on the three houses on across the street in Warden Boulevard?
Just, I want to. Eric, can I ask you about the cross section of the road, please? It's in the presentation.
We are going to refer to exhibit A seven, line nine.
So the thing that you're in upon. The building is a big, part of that, it's not, it's the average rate of lane, though. Being as if he looks at the average rate of the round building.
Okay, so then let me ask the question, what's the height of the building on the on the side of the Warden Boulevard? From Warden Boulevard to the top of the building, what's that height?
There you go. So that's on top of Raisin Boulevard, it's the the top three stores. Right? So when you're on that intersection, you're like, oh, the end of the.
Sorry.
And then if you're, and then when you come down into the square, if you're fronting on the road and AC, AC and so uh, because there's a car here to to. So do I, it's better looking than people on your home, if not, your homes are are cleaned back or going to go on the. So it's going to be very similar.
It's not, it's.
Let, okay, don't talk.
Alright, sorry.
Paris, it's going to be very similar to the way like thirty-four unit building was built three years back down to the work buildings. So there, there is a very good example of what this has done to the whole life directly across the world, which are residential.
What the point is, live work buildings have the first floor that is work, and then the residential areas are elevated, at least, I'm assuming twelve feet, if not more. So I'm not elevated twelve feet. So so I'm I'm on the ground level, and I'm just two floors, I'm not three floors above the the stores, so you can see how that can loom, I can open the window and I'm gonna, I'm gonna see a brick building in front of me. So and that's the the height is a real, real concern.
I don't wear, I don't wear. That's what you have seen.
No, no, there is not.
Let him, let him answer, and then you can.
Maybe I'm confused about where your home is. Not where any residential. Well, get a phone, get a bill.
What do you mean by fronting? You mean the front entrance? But that's, that that's not, that does not matter, is my backyard, is my home, is my bedroom where I sleep. So it's my home, at the end of the day, it's my home, or the whole footprint of it. Yes, and if the, i- if the live work townhomes are, were, were not, were two floors homes, the building across the street was going to loom over them. They are not, they are taller building.
Hey. Is that an objection? So yeah, you you need to, you're making a statement now, and I know it's, 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 it's not easy, I I.
Okay.
I took up on it too. You you just need to ask him questions and let him answer, and then, and then you you will have an opportunity during your case. We will swear you in if you want to be your own witness, and then you can make whatever statement you want to make.
Okay. So then, the the building, live work building, being taller, then the building across the street does not, does not loom then? Just because of the the height of those building is a difference in the height, is that correct? From single, from single town, from single homes?
Or are they single homes, is that your question?
Yes, them being taller than single home wouldn't, then they, that wouldn't loom over them. They they are the same height, so are they the same height, the building across from live work townhomes, and the townhomes, are they the same height? And what's the difference then?
It's two buildings. Live work.
Yeah. Yes, across the Warden Boulevard, not, not on the side of the, not on the side of the, the square.
I don't know the answer there.
Okay, so then with that rationale, let's assume that this is ten foot higher, just for the sake of the conversation. Then shouldn't the building across the street from my home be ten foot higher and no more? Why? Okay, but you, you, okay, that's okay, you don't know the answer to, you.
You're, what, I'm not even following you with, what is ten foot higher, I'm not trying to be difficult, but.
Okay, you, you don't know the difference in height, so you said that those buildings are different in height, the live work and the building across townhomes, so I'm just saying for the sake of the argument, when you build this other building, if this was, let's say, ten foot higher than live work, with the same rationale, the same difference in height, should be applied to the single homes and the building you're building across the street to have, not to have them loom over.
This area was almost clear. So when you walk into home, you've been spilling beer. If you were, if there was a building going to tell me this location, there's always been a building here. What the height of that building was, really was not the period we built, we put together a little application. Now we've established what our application is, it was a retail on the first floor, the first floor.
Yes.
It's in the same location of where we always proposed the door.
What, which year? Which volume is this proposed?
Probably, it's been since the original, the original.
Again, which year?
Probably early nineties.
Okay. Okay, so then, again, the question comes about the height of the building.
Yeah, I I think we've, I mean, I, if I understand your point correctly, it's that this building is larger, higher than your building, so it's going to impinge upon your viewscape and and other things on those lots. Okay, I thi- I think you've made that point.
Okay.
Is, can we, do you have other?
Yeah, yeah, yes, is, if this goes forward, which I'm assuming is going to, is any the market, does it have, what are the opening hours? At what times is the market going to operate, being that it is in residential area? Is any restriction, or is it going to operate like, like Wegmans or any other store?
Just to confirm with.
Eight to eight, okay, in the delivered trucks, then you guys have that picture in there, the loading dock. What time are they supposed to come in?
I would love to be able to control delivery.
Okay, well, shouldn't be some restriction of that, because I'm assuming there are going to be eighteen wheelers and they are allowed.
It's like, well, trash. We've done with trash, not getting picked up, it's new, trash gets picked up. It's, you know, we have to work with what this fires are.
Okay. Is there, is there any idea to keep, if you can bring the map up for a second, please, I want to point somewhere. Okay, can, can I take the microphone and go there? I want to point something at the map. Oh, no. Okay. And then. Yeah, alright, so. Okay, so. Should, should this be closed off, so then the commercial area, town center and everything doesn't interfere with housing, with traffic, with anything, and the entrance to the, to the market is commenced through Wellington and Rice and this way, so we are kept in peace, so the traffic doesn't enter here, so being this closed off and all the traffic, since this is a stop sign already, would be commenced in this direction and be done entering here, getting back here and going to their very ways. Okay, any reason for not even considering that in the future or anything for?
When you design a town center like this, you basically want to create a spider web, spider web network of entrances and exits, that you just spurred traveling throughout the room.
Okay. Okay, so any, the the noise and light pollution, anything, those are all taken into consideration or?
Well, I'll be compliant with that.
Okay. Alright, well. That's all the questions I have for now, so thank you for this.
Thank you, thank you very much. Does the board have any questions based on the testimony and questions we've heard?
Not for this witness, no, thank you.
Ms. Zaro, do you have any redirect?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Fisher. Different picture does, one follow question with regards to loading at the regional town center, would this operate essentially the way the other businesses that exist operate today?
Yes, it would.
And also because this particular car was not at the last hearing, did you touch on the fact that the loading area for this particular building would be enclosed specifically for Kimberton Hall or each other? Yes. No further questions.
Alright, thank you. Do you have a, your next witness? Well, before we do that, let me ask the, how are you doing? So, you have a next witness?
Next, I'd like to call a guy named Martino.
Would you swear the witnessing? I do.
Um, guy, he's taking him, and. It's just the driver, Ryan Fish.
Yes, Guy DiMartino, Traffic Planning and Design Inc., ten twenty-five, Andrew Drive, Westchester, PA.
Hey, Guy, who is your employer and what's your position?
I'm employed by Traffic Planning and Design Inc., you know, regional leader in transportation planning.
And are you a professional engineer at Pennsylvania?
I am.
And have you testified from the county that other bodies go out, uh, new bodies regarding transportation planning and care?
Yes, I have.
And me and Mr. DiMartino, CB, Mark is exhibit A eleven. And that's a board of other partners, but I'd like to offer him as an expert in transportation planning.
I have no objection.
Nope, no objection.
Do any of the other parties, the three other parties have any objection to the offer of the expert as a, in transportation planning engineering? Alright, we'll accept that.
Sorry?
Yes, I am.
Questions regarding the carpey and town center, and I'd like to start there. Today, when we are talking about the town center and the uses of the particular buildings that have been built to date, can you tell the board how many curkings cases are required under today's ordinance for the use of that exists today?
Yes, that number is one thousand two hundred and forty-five parking spaces.
And previously, as we touched on, had supervisor branded allowance to hold to twenty percent of non-residential uses per being in reserve.
Yes, they have.
And what is the required per being for today's uses based on that twenty percent?
One thousand one hundred fifty-four parking spaces.
And you heard Mr. Fisher touch earlier on the fact that Hinkin had built out parking in parking fields over time, not necessarily in in sync with that particular reduction that's been approved, do you know how many parking spaces exist on the town center site today?
Yes, currently, there are one thousand three hundred parking spaces within the town center.
So either document parking or holding that parking in reserve was previously branded, and even based on a full now, well, film out, are there more parking spaces today in town center than would otherwise be required?
Yes, that's correct.
Now turning to the total, what is the requirement for retail store, which would be the Kimberton Whole Foods in the P, the ID district?
It is one space per every, per one hundred square feet of sales area. So the market is ten, ten thousand eight hundred square feet of sales area, which we relate to hundred and eight required parking spaces for that use.
And is the parking required for a non-huge restricted apartment unit in the P C I D district, two point five spaces per unit?
Yes.
So how many parking spaces on up to build out would be required for the forty-one?
Hundred and three spaces.
So then the total parking spaces required for any apartments, redundant production, what?
Two eleven.
Now we have marked as exhibit A eighteen, the parking allocation plan for rent and full build out, which is the first one. So this show, the full out, build out of all the town that are used, including the newly proposed grocery store and apartments, and where are those parking spaces, would be located on the site?
Yes, it does.
And what is the total number of parking spaces if all parking spaces were built?
One thousand four hundred fifty-six.
And there was a little confusion earlier about what the exhibits are that were shown tonight and what we showed earlier, specifically with respect to the full build out. Is the full build out occurred, is that any difference than what would have been required initially under our application, putting aside the ten percent, so the full build out had not changed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Want to make that clear, so this particular plan that was not created from a color quoting perspective, to try to make it a little clearer than what was presented at the first hearing, the full build out is the same as what was presented by Mr. Fisher in the first hearing, if you understand, Brad.
Correct, same number of spaces.
And again, that's one thousand four hundred fifty-six?
Yes.
And it's your understanding that Hinkin would now like to see the ten percent of, the whole ten percent of those parking spaces in reserve in total, and is that shown on, we have marked as exhibit A nineteen, which is the parking application plan for a ten percent.
Yes, it is.
How many parking spaces would be required for all including the new grocery store and apartments with a ten percent reduction applied?
One thousand three hundred fifteen parking spaces.
So in total, how many parking spaces would Hinkin propose, up to how many parking spaces would Hinkin propose to hold in reserve?
A hundred forty-one spaces.
And that would then equal the one thousand four hundred fifty-six total?
Correct.
Have you had an opportunity to review the McMahon Associates review letter of November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, I have.
And in comment three of that letter, now we'll have to get this again, but just for clarification, did McMahon appear to miss counting some of the apartment base area? um, did McMahon appear to miss counting some of the apartment base areas that is held in reserve next to the senior housing area?
Yes, uh, sixteen parking spaces were, were missed in the review.
So in total, you are confident particularly reviewing these new plans, that if required, the full buildout could occur on the site?
Yes.
Um, were you responsible for the preparation of what we have marked as exhibit A twelve, a parking analysis, due November third, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, I was.
Um, and can you briefly explain what the parking analysis is and what the purpose of doing this?
Sure, so that, the previous numbers I testified to this evening were related to the ordinance requirements. The parking analysis focused on the, the real world operations of the parking demand that exists today, um, within the Town Center. So we performed, uh, parking counts and counted, um, parking occupancy within the Town Center. Um, we did it during, um, eight different time periods. Um, we did it on, we did it in September of twenty twenty-three on a Thursday, um, approximately around four P M. And then again, at seven P M. on a Thursday evening, um, on Friday, we did it during four different time periods, early in the morning, seven A M. A lunchtime hour around noon, again, at roughly five P M. and Friday evening at seven P M. And then on Saturday, um, we did it Saturday afternoon around noon, and then again, um, capturing the, the restaurant, um, busy period around seven P M. on Saturday.
Uh, and that study, did you determine a maximum existing peak parking demand based on your observations?
Yes.
And what was that?
That was seven hundred and sixty-seven, um, occupied spaces during that time period.
And then do you further, did you further analyze, um, what the projected parking demand would be for the new uses in order to determine a future maximum peak parking demands?
Yes, so taking that seven hundred sixty-seven, um, maximum parking occupancy that we observed, then adding the required spaces associated with the market and the apartments, that two hundred and eleven number that I testified to earlier, which does not take a credit, a ten percent or a twenty percent reduction, and that two eleven number, we added that to the seven sixty-seven. We also did factor in, um, some minor vacancies that are within, um, the Town Center. I believe it's roughly two thousand square feet, um, which is, is vacant, at least it was at the time of our parking counts. Um, so factoring in that, applying the township, uh, parking requirement of five spaces per thousand is an additional ten spaces as well. So adding those three numbers together results in a peak demand of um, peak, future demand of nine hundred eighty-eight parking spaces. So that's seven sixty-seven plus ten plus the, um, two eleven, two eleven.
So even if this board were to approve the, the ten percent of the parking could be held in reserve, uh, in your opinion, would there be adequate parking supply to accommodate future demand?
Yes, it will be in excess of three hundred unoccupied spaces.
Um, and, um, did McMahon incur in comment for its review letter that there would be adequate supply for parking for Jordan Beasley to propose their Town Center use?
Yes, they did.
Um, were you also responsible over the preparation of what we have marked as a third tax study, April, November, third?
Yes.
Uh, and when we're back to the tracking tax study, um, I think you're more familiar with how these work, but to be definite when we get the resident question, we can further it slightly, but, um, if you just briefly explain, um, the intersection you've studied, um, and your findings.
Sure, uh, we evaluated six intersections, uh, the, the intersections along, pre-intersections, I'll say, along Rice Boulevard, uh, Rice and Pennsylvania Drive, Rice and Stockton Drive, Rice and Wharton Boulevard, um, and then working your way down Wharton Boulevard. We studied Wharton Boulevard and Primitive Drive, Wharton Ball Boulevard and Tricket Lane and Wharton Boulevard and Per Mercy Lane. Um, as, as you've heard and you're all aware, um, the Town Center is served by various driveways to Rice Boulevard and Wharton. A Wharton Boulevard, I'm sorry. This proposed, proposed uses will, will utilize as existing access points. And so they'll be served by those existing access points. Uh, when determining how much traffic would be generated, we use industry standards, um, to account for the added traffic related to the proposed application. Um, and evaluated the intersections, um, that I mentioned previously.
Uh, and with respect to trip generation analysis, uh, can you explain to the board across like how many not new vehicle trips are anticipated to occur? Should you maybe just briefly explain what a peak hour is?
Sure, so we, then we determined the trip generation for the, the two proposed uses based on industry standards. The, um, I T E trip generation manual is that the resource, um, that we use to determine the trip generation for these given uses. Um, based on that data within that, uh, manual, the proposed market and apartment uses are anticipated to generate seventy new vehicle trips during the weekday A M. peak hour. Anytime I say peak hour, that's referred to a sixty-minute period. Um, and when I say A M. peak hour, that's typically for a use like this, it focuses on a one-hour period, um. Generally, that coincides with the commuter time period in the morning, generally at seven to nine A M. So one-hour period between that two-hour window is what I'm referring to when I say a peak hour. Um, similarly, during the weekday P M. peak hour, again, a one-hour time period, um, for a commuter time period in the evening, generally four to six P M. is what we focus on. Um, in the P M. peak hour, um, it's a hundred twenty-seven new vehicle trips. And then Saturday in the midday, in this case, we focused on a time period between eleven A M. and one P M. Um, the one-hour period between that two-hour window is a hundred seventy-seven new trips, um, related to this application.
To include traffic, that occurred in Town Center, is the, um, lab building, which is represented?
Yes, uh, Hank in, uh, say recently and somewhat recent, uh, past, um, has installed always stop, um, installed additional stop signs at two intersections so that they function as, uh, always stops. Um, the one intersection being Wharton Boulevard, uh, with, with Rice Boulevard and the second intersection being Rice Boulevard at Pennsylvania Drive. So that only, that controls the vehicular traffic, providing a, a more controlled intersection with all motorists stopping. Um, it also provides for better, um, pedestrian movements, um, so that when they're crossing, when vehicles are stopped at an intersection.
Um, and when you take this, uh, trip generation data, do you then, um, take a look at, uh, levels of service section, uh, within a projected time period once the, uh, development is filled out?
Yes.
Um, and what was that year that you looked at here?
We evaluated a, a future year of twenty twenty-five.
Um, and then can you explain just briefly what an intersection level of service is?
Sure. Intersection level service, it's a, it's a grading system, just like school, A through F, A being the best. Um, F, obviously, a, a failing condition, um, and that, that letter grading system is based on the average delay that a motorist experiences when traveling through an intersection. So the lower the delay, um, the better level of service grade.
Um, and with respect to, um, the intersections that you studied, do they operate at an acceptable action of service during the projected twenty twenty-five additions?
Yes, they, all the six intersections that we evaluated operated at a, a level of service B or better during the peak hours.
Um, comment two of the McMahon letter, um, indicated that you should also look at the lot five, the office development as part of your background projections, in addition to other things that you did study. Did you go back and take a look at that?
Yes, uh, yeah, lot, I believe it's lot fifty-eight, um, yeah, so we, we did run some additional analysis, um, and with adding that development, a future development into our, our analysis and our volumes, there are no changes to the level of service that I just testified to.
So even with that additional?
Correct.
Um, has T P D, uh, recommended any improvements, like?
Yes, we, we recommend that there be sidewalk provided along the frontage currently along the frontage on both Wharton Boulevard and, and Rice Boulevard, there is not sidewalk, um, so you can, you kind of see it on this exhibit where sidewalk is proposed. And with that, upgrade the necessary ADA ramps, um, where that sidewalk is being provided.
Um, so finally, um, in your opinion, will the proposed development materially increase traffic congestion on the roads or at the road intersections that were?
No, I do not believe it will.
I have no further questions from Mr. DiMartino, and I don't know if anyone's listening on Zoom.
Does the board have any questions? I'm not at this time.
I just have one question, I've, maybe it's just my eyes, they start, stop working at eight o'clock P M. Um, on exhibit A, I think it's A eighteen, the zoomed-in version of the modified parking plan that was submitted, um, the pedestrian corridor that goes kind of up the grand stairway, if you will, straight towards the existing A C A C building. Is that striped crosswalk? Is that a continental stripes crosswalk? Where there was going to be like the enhanced, um, pedestrian corridor?
I think you're referring to exhibit A seventeen.
Is it A seventeen? I'm sorry.
Yes, it'll be the continental or piano key style crosswalk, that's the intention.
I don't have any other questions.
Shavels, any questions?
Uh, yes, based on the line of the
Hold on a second, let, so, do you want to, you want to hand him the microphone and then you can turn one up, let him get, you're good.
Uh, based on the previous objection by the hanging group, um, with my party status, I'm going to need to add a party status tonight as an H O A Eagleview Board Member. I think the rights need to be represented, uh, represented by, uh, my Eagleview constituents as well, so I'm going to need to pay to have additional party status, uh, to be represented. Not sure why the objection happened, but I think I need to be able to cover my bases with regard to that. So I'll need to get party status with regard to Eagleview.
So, so you're asking, you're asking for party status both in your individual capacity and as, as a representative of the H O A?
Yes, and I know you need to rule on that, so I'll, but I think that I clearly fall within party standing in both of those areas.
Um, with respect to that, B P D, H O A, have you been authorized by the H O A?
Uh, I'm not speaking on behalf, I'm asking questions on behalf.
Well, I mean.
I need party status to ask questions, so I'm requesting.
You, you have been granted, I, I've granted you part, with, this board's granted you party.
That was something personal, and I'm, I'm just trying to cover my bases here, Mr. Solicitor. Um, I don't know why they wanted to block it, so I, I need to know whether or not it needs to be represented, both personally and also have, you know, the ability to ask questions on behalf of our, our two hundred and eighty plus community.
So I guess the question that the council asked is, is have you been authorized by the H O A?
Authorized, ask questions of the Hinkin Group and their, uh, members, uh, what they're, what they're doing.
Okay, any objection? Any of the other parties have objection? No, okay, you're.
Uh, Guy, thank you very much for, uh, everything you talked about today. Uh, you said you had, uh, approximately three hundred extra spaces on the overall plan uh, with regards to the buildout, and I have to commend the Hinkin Community, I think they're doing a wonderful job. Overall, I am very pleased, the community lived there twenty-three years, but with the three hundred, uh, additional spaces, um, and forty-one apartments and approximately, you know, one to two people living in there, um, would you, as a traffic guy, say that people are going to walk a great distance to park far away from where their residences are, and a follow-up to that is, where do you see those forty-one residents parking with fourteen spaces and a bunch of spaces that are being used for the market? Just in the general three hundred outstanding area?
I'll, I'll take the second question first, because it's fresh in my mind. As Mr. Fisher testified to the Town Center parking, there, other than the underground parking for the residence, some of the residential units that you, were discussed earlier this evening, the Town Center parking is not designated, so there's an opportunity for, um, to park anywhere within the Town Center. Um, certainly, people certainly people provide, or prefer convenience, so they're going to seek the most convenient space. Um, but the requirements are for the Town Center as a whole.
So that being said, and a follow-up to a previous question that was asked about perimeter drive, um, when there is an overabundance of heavy usage, um, you've determined that perimeter drive and the surrounding streets are not going to be used as a potential overflow of parking, since there are no signs saying no parking on perimeter drive that preclude people from parking on either side of the street and allowing an eleven-foot thruway fare? Based on Ms. Doolittle's earlier comments?
I've concluded that there is in excess, I think the exact number is three hundred twenty-seven spaces that would be available within the Town Center even during the peak period. Um, keep in mind, I mentioned we counted eight different time periods, and they had analysis where we landed on and came up to three hundred twenty-seven spaces was based on that busiest period of those eight time periods. There was other time periods that we counted where there was even two hundred spaces less than that peak period. So we focused on the busiest time period of those that we evaluated, and all the numbers, even when you run through the calculations, still say there will be three hundred twenty-seven or three hundred twenty-six extra spaces um, within Town Center. So just as a regular user to the Town Center, I think it would be desirable to park on perimeter drive when there's over three hundred spaces and available within the Town Center.
So it's your testimony that you don't think that there would be any, uh, problems with an eight-to-eight opening with a market? And having those spaces used for, uh, market and also for residents? You don't foresee any overages that would cause people to park for convenience?
There's over three hundred available spaces within Town Center to accommodate the parking demand of the Town Center as proposed.
Got it, and, um, given the abundance of, of residential, uh, buildup in the area, whether it be apartments or uh, the low-income family homes, uh, that, uh, residential buildup, um, do you see, uh, making the crosswalks along perimeter and Wharton in those areas, uh, be handicap accessible for our community that has, uh, deaf and impaired people? Would it be with sounds, with additional lighting, specific stop signs? Since there will be an increase in traffic from people that will probably be, uh, outside of the community and maybe not familiar? Have you made any recommendations that that would be a convenient thing or a necessary thing that would, should be done?
From, we, we evaluated the intersections from an operation standpoint in terms of level of service.
So not such hammock, so not so.
Okay, hold, hold on a second, so, let me, it gets very difficult for the court reporter, so we just have to, I know it's, it's a little stilted, but we gotta go bump, 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 okay, thanks. Did you get the bump, 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 bump? So, again.
Again, we evaluated the intersections from a level of service perspective. There's, um, level of service B certainly indicates there's sufficient operations that there's intersections for vehicles um, to traverse the intersections without excessive delays. Of the six intersections we evaluated, all but one are always stop-controlled intersections. The only one that is not is, as you're, I well aware, is, is Rice and Wharton. That only is a two-way stop, it's referred to as a two-way stop, even though it's a T-intersection. Um, so my point being is that all the, the other five intersections are all very well-controlled in terms of controlling vehicular traffic and allowing pedestrians to, um, cross a lot more freely and in a more efficient manner than if there wasn't, they were not always stop-controlled intersections.
Okay. Questions I have, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, um, uh, Ms. Doolow?
Thanks, I'll be brief, uh, just to confirm, you've talked about parking and traffic. Uh, and I believe when you were asking clarifying questions with the parking situation you were talking about today, um, what's required for use today? Um, what's required for use today, uh several times the use of today, but for the traffic study. Um, I understand from what I heard that that was done. Projected for twenty twenty-five volume based on the planned um development that's already either underway or completed. Do I have that right? The traffic study is taking into account future volume, but the parking analysis is taking in into account current volume.
Take it one by one. The the parking analysis, some of the questions. In the beginning part of my testimony regarding the town center as it exists today. Meaning without the proposed application before us this evening, what are the requirements of the township ordinance? Based on those what exist today?
Okay, so without that additional market market and apartment area and without. The development that's planned on Constitution Ave, which is called Town Center Two, none of that volume is part of what you're.
All the parking testimony. This evening and at the prior hearing. Does not contemplate parking associated with Town Center Two. That's. We're focused on this town center on the plan before us this evening.
Yeah, absolutely. They're just residents that are going to come in. That's why I'm trying to ask if that volume for parking included.
And that volume for parking is included when we look at the future parking demand. When you add the the proposed market and the proposed apartments, that's when we factor in the ordinance requirements associated with. Those uses and we add that on top of the existing demand. I get the future parking demand.
Thank you. Um, when you talked about full buildout, and maybe this is a question for you, Neil, is um. Is the full buildout representative of all? Proposed development zones in the whole master plan that have or have not yet been submitted for approval? Or is full buildout just what we've got planned so far? Yes, so um. Let's see. Today's use, no, this was for parking.
I was gonna say, I think that maybe if we're just taking one step back, I mean, to try to help distinguish because I think. Sort of mixing apples and oranges a little bit.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to get clarification.
Study, and then he also did a traffic. Get different things and then you different perception. I don't think we're more detailed of working part of it, but maybe just looking to. Give a little bit of. A summary of how you were studying and what you're asking about background growth, pretty ways to traffic. Which Mr. D Martino looks at, but in the context of the traffic study, is that what you're asking?
Yep, so this traffic study, I was really clear on you're using some current data, you're projecting with the increase in volume of planned development. Got that one. I was going back to parking because when we were talking about the numbers for parking, I heard about today based on today, today. And so I wanted to understand what it does or doesn't include in terms of proposed. Additional residents. So we're we're increasing the population, the the neighborhood residency in Eagleview by a substantial amount. And I wanted to understand if there were any assumptions built in to the parking estimates based on that new influx of residents.
Working that. Being. So this is as an example, so. Eagle now. Just as an example.
Yep.
Parked for a building is. For parking statements per now. So that tells you how many parking spaces you need now. Also, at the same time, you do a track. The traffic study, you look at what you're building, just everything that's going on in the area. And then we make one of the cell. It doesn't, coming back then to the parking, your parking is still a space for thousand. It doesn't matter what's going on outside of your project.
Okay. It does. And then maybe just to clarify um for the existing parking area that's. Um, directly connected to the new the ACAC and the new market building, so not the. Parking that extends in front of the apartments, but in the main parking area, has that parking area ever been expanded or is that the size? Of the parking area that's been there since Eagleview was developed?
Since it was developed. Uh, it's been there a long time.
Mm-hmm.
We are that area in front of market in order to. Uh, make nature more. In vehicle in the market. And play with grades so that it's it's a platter area.
Yeah.
Know that the product relative to the speed. So uh we create a be a platter parking arrangement for. The market so that it's the mean of comparing.
Yep, appreciate it. I just wanted to confirm that we haven't expanded, that that's been the same size. As we've continued to add more amenities and residents, we haven't expanded that parking area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So my Seals.
Hi. So um, just to clarify, you mentioned early a stop sign at Wharton in Rice. Is that in the works or or? Is that future plan or?
I was referring to the existing stop sign.
On Wellington in Rice?
On Wharton, on Wharton Boulevard as you're approaching Rice Boulevard?
There there is no stop sign there. There is no, the one the ones that that were that are recent is in Wellington and Rice. So there is no stop sign in Wharton and uh Rice.
Wait. What? Right, so if you're on Wharton Boulevard and you want to turn on to Rice Boulevard, either to make a left or right, you have to stop approaching Rice Boulevard. At a stop sign.
Okay, so there is, there is not a four-way, that uh three-way in this case because it's a T, but there 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 isn't, there is one on Rice, on Wharton, yes. Okay, so you're referring to that. So is it, are they gonna, uh, will a stop sign be added on Rice on the other direct on? On Rice as well? So Rice traffic stops or no?
There there are none uh planned at this time. There is certain criteria that has to be satisfied. They're referred to as warrants. Um, they have to be satisfied in term in order for um that to be installed. Um, certain engineering criteria that has to be met in order for an installation like that to occur.
Okay, well, when you mentioned you uh studied peak hours, were there seasonal or just one, one, what type, what season were the were done?
The counts were done, the type of accounts were done in September twenty twenty-three.
Okay, but during summer, especially when uh the restaurants extend outside their dining area, so there is more uh people dining out. But we have driven around coming from somewhere and trying to go and get an ice cream at Rita's, and we haven't found a parking spot, so we went home parked and then walked. So we've seen that being full, but just wanted to see if that if it's done during the summer and no concerts or nothing, events, just. Regular night. That in summer, people do tend to come out a lot in town center and parking over spills, parking is full. So I've seen that. Have have you guys considered summer study? When that is probably when it gets more busy?
I I think the question is, did have you considered doing a study over the summer?
Yes, when we perform these traffic studies, it's actually required, typically required for use like this, that. We don't do it during the summer, um because what happens is school's not in session, so you're missing. The school traffic, um so typically the volumes in the summer are a lot less. Um, and then you have people on vacations, so typical standards, PennDOT standards, municipal standards, when you're doing a traffic study like this. Is to evaluate when school is in session.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not asking about traffic. I'm talking about peak hours for parking, not traffic, so. Well, s- school being in session or not, I don't think our buses, buses don't park there, so I don't think that's probably relevant.
Okay, I heard your question related to traffic.
Hmm, sorry, now it's parking.
We have the. Think you see where. The area that we block all the retail area. For the rest.
Yes, yes, so yeah, so less parking and then more people hence. So that's what I mean, those are peak parking times, so. Okay.
Okay, yeah, and I can and I can uh confirm when we did our counts in September of twenty twenty-three, there were. Parking spaces that were blocked. As you mentioned, um, but again, are we counted the number of. Um, occupied spaces, so. The number of, we counted the number of parked cars, so regardless, so if there was zero spaces that were blocked, or if there was ten or a hundred. The number of occupied spaces is still what I testified to this evening.
Oh. Is there any thought of um redoing the study during the summer, just to verify that is uh sufficient?
There is no intention to, um, there is in excess, even with the app, what we're proposing, in excess of thirty percent. More parking spaces proposed than what we feel the peak demand will be. So so there is no, there's no plans to perform a additional study in the summer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any follow up based on those? Questions?
I just have one question, and I apologize, it might be better suited for Mr. Fisher. It's traffic related, so. That's okay. Um, in regards to the market being more of a destination, or as you. Defined it kind of something that would draw people into the town center, um. Have you given any thought as a whole to? Um, revisiting conversations with public transit, given that Pubcepta has reduced their service to the area?
Sorry about that. Uh, actually, so I am part of the T Mac, on the T Mac board, right, which is uh. Transportation, oh, sure.
It's it's late, we don't need to know.
Services, it's SEPTA and right, and and trying to get, and as part of that, I am trying to get SEPTA to expand service to town center. You may know that service is on Eagleview Boulevard, it is on Constitution. And it does not go into town center. We would love to get SEPTA into town center. Not only for the uses of town center, but also for our senior community that's there. And um for employees, for visitors. We we are are struggling because it it's a time, SEPTA looks at it, it's it's basically its time. How long does it take the bus to do the route that they're on? And get down so that they can get onto the train? In order to do that, to expand into Eagleview, they would have to cut out other portions of the bus route. Right, so they, because they can't change the time.
Right.
And uh. As much as I try, I have not been able to get them to expand that service in the Eagleview. Uh, we do work with with Rover for the senior communities. Which is now um Chesko Connects.
Mm-hmm.
As far as providing uh public transportation for. Really the affordable senior housing building so that they can get to, whether it's. The grocery store, the movies, and and that is all scheduled, that's all scheduled bus routes through Chesko Connects.
Good. Great, thank you.
Right, yeah.
No, no, Mr. Miller.
Uh, uh, of the first.
Well, there's.
Okay, no, okay. Uh, so I have a question. It's it's, I guess it's somewhat traffic related, but uh I really um curious. About what kind of traffic you're gonna, the the market is expecting to be generated from Eagleview proper or from outside of Eagleview. I know what the traffic study says, but I'm not sure if that matches up with, say, the market research that the the market actually did, so.
One, I I do think that Eagleview and the surrounding area is a huge market for Kimberton. Um, but here's in a. There, one thing that the traffic study and and certainly Mr. D Martino can talk more about this, one thing the traffic study doesn't really talk about. Is all the sharing, meaning, and where does the parking study? So meaning the sharing of people who are going to live here and then walk over to ACAC and then go walk. And it's one parking space, but they're going to go from there, they're going to go down to Rita's or to the the restaurants. And they're going to hit three or four different stops all in the same time. It's the same with parking. There's a lot of things that are. Uh, the use is assumes more of a use that could be built in the field versus something where. People are already here. And it's not creating a massive, like it is that same type of demand on the infrastructure that's already in place. So I guess what I'm saying is. Both are conservative. The parking analysis is a conservative analysis. The traffic study is a conservative analysis. That makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know if it was exactly the answer I was looking for, but that's, that's what, I was just more curious what what kind of generation of of traffic was coming from, so. I understand what the report said, but if the market research could have been different, you're saying, hey, we're going to get, you know, X number.
All retail users look at a five-mile radius. And so if you look at, if you were to draw a map, a circle on a map and. Uh, say, where where's my traffic coming from? That's the area that you're drawing from.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have read direct?
Uh. Sounds and lights and things on traffic. Um. Um, is that something that's determined by the Hankin Group or is that determined by Department of Transportation? Thirdly, I'm looking out for the safety and well-being of our walking community that this community was built upon, so I'm just trying to understand. Where that traffic safety falls within apartment regulations versus private enterprise?
Sounds and lights as it relates to traffic.
Uh.
Go ahead.
Like, just like, as I said, we have handicap and deaf. Um, it, is there something that would allow a a buzzer or a beeper that you see on other streets? Is, are there other options that are available? Uh, to you or to our walking community to safeguard the protection of our community?
So two thoughts on it. One. The intersections are illuminated through through lights that are part of town center. Um, and then. I I. Each, as we as we come and we we install new sidewalks in new areas, there will be new ADA ramps that are all compliant with PennDOT standards.
Like the ones that are south on Wharton that were just built?
That's correct.
And that's in your purview or that's regulated by Department of Transportation?
The, so the intersections that we'll be working on within this are areas where we're putting new sidewalks, so. The intersection of Stockton and. Rice. The intersection of Rice and Wharton, the intersection of perimeter and Wharton as it comes across and into this project.
Right, thank you.
Any follow up based on that? Okay, thank you. How are you?
Going to break?
Hmm?
Okay. Okay. My last witness will be the quickest one, so uh next I'd like to call Eric Hetzel.
I do.
Eric, could you please state your name and business address for the record?
It's uh Eric Hetzel. Uh, EH Creative Services LLC, uh, six sixteen Manor Road, Paoli, Pennsylvania, one nine three oh one.
And Eric, are you um a principal with EH Creative Services LLC?
I am.
Um, and uh. Are you also a? Planner, certified planner, and have you done uh fiscal impact studies for many different municipalities within um this region of Chester County?
I am and I have.
Okay. Um, I do have Mr. Hetzel CV marked as exhibit A fourteen. I certainly could go into more detail, but otherwise. Um, I am offering him as an expert in planning and preparation of these studies.
No objection.
We're not using him as a full planner, but you know, that.
Of which study of the?
Of the fiscal impact study, yeah.
No objection from the board? Any objection from the parties? Thank you. Yeah, it will be accepted.
Thank you. Um. Eric, were you responsible for the, what we have marked as exhibit A fifteen, a fiscal impact summary dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
I am.
Um, and um, does the Euclid Township zoning ordinance with respect to conditional use applications. Require the applicant to prepare a fiscal impact study?
It does.
Um, and did you take a look at those requirements and then put your summary together?
I did, yes.
And could you briefly explain the assumptions and information that you utilized for the fiscal impact? Study, and then um we can talk about what the net result of that is.
Um. Consistent with the uh with the zoning requirements, I utilized the per capita multiplier method um. That was developed by the Rutgers University Center for Urban Policy Research. that was developed by the Rutgers University Center for Urban Policy Research and published in the New Practitioner's Guide to Fiscal Impact Analysis and the Development Impact Assessment Handbook, generally accepted standard for fiscal impact analysis. I reviewed township and school district budget documents, land use information, assessment information, tax rates, and, and budget information to estimate projected revenues to the township and the school district associated with the proposed development, as well as costs for services that would be incurred or generated as a result of the proposed development.
And with respect to the proposed development, you did study both the forty-one apartment units as well, including assumptions about the number of bedrooms, and then also the Kimberton Whole Foods?
I did, I reviewed them separately and then combined the results.
And you were also given information that you utilized with respect to employees and those types of assumptions for the use?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the net fiscal impact? What did you determine the net fiscal impact was first on the township and then second on the Downingtown Area School District?
First on the township, I estimated that revenues would exceed taxes on an annual basis by sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars from the proposed development, that's a net positive fiscal impact to township. And likewise to the school district, revenues would exceed costs in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars, again, net fiscal positive impact. Combined, that results in two hundred and three thousand five hundred and one dollars. That's a net fiscal positive impact. That's to the township and school district combined.
I have no further questions for Mr. Hetzel.
Board of any questions?
I do not.
I do not.
Mr. Bales? And, okay.
With that, I would like to request to move my exhibits marked A eleven through A nineteen into evidence.
Any objection? No. Any objection from the parties? All right, yeah, they're admitted.
Thank you.
All right, so we're now, is that the end of your case?
That is the end of my case, yes.
We're now gonna move to the the intervenor's case. Mr. Bales, do you have any witnesses you'd like to call?
I do not have any witnesses that I like to call.
Is there, is there a sworn statement you'd like to make? I mean, if there is, just, just, and I just want to lay the groundwork, if you make a statement, which you're entitled to do, you can be your own witness. Parties, the board and other parties will have an opportunity to cross-examine you. So let me, have you sworn in first?
I do, thank you. Uh, I'm speaking as myself, personal citizen. I just want to commend the Henkin Group. I think overall, what you guys are doing is great. And I appreciate you guys availing yourself to myself and also the community to help make this a, a better place. And I have to tell you, they've done a great job. They've been very open with me and I, I appreciate that. I think they're doing great fiscal and steward responsibilities within our community. However, I, I, I do feel that there is room for, for improvement for this awesome walking community that we live in. And I hope the board will take into consideration a lot of the things that are said tonight to make this community it, make it better than what it, what it is and what it can be. And that's really what I'd like to state as a, you know, as a, as a person that, that lives in the community. I have no other statements to make on behalf of the Eagleview Board.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Board have any questions? Uh, Ms. Dulo? You can also make comments in the public comment period, if you can. Okay, and Ms. Uh, do you, would you like to make a sworn statement, present a case, or call any witnesses?
Oh, I don't have any witnesses, I was not prepared.
Do you have anything you want to say, sworn, do you want to be sworn in and say something?
I don't, thank you. Um, so my main concern is, especially the height of the building being very tall and very close to the, especially the three homes that border Wharton Boulevard, and I would like for them to reconsider that, and that's my statement, so.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I do not, any question? All right, thank you. So that concludes the testimony portion of the record, so now we're gonna, do you want to keep going? Now we're gonna move to the, the public comment period. So if people would like to just come up to the microphone to make public comment? So this is not, and just, so I, so public comment, it's, it's, it's obviously board reports there, it's something the board hears, it's not technically considered evidence as part of the case.
Thanks. At least it's not eleven o'clock like it was in January. Uh, just in keeping in my three minutes. I do appreciate, my neighbors anecdotally have told me that the market coming in is a wonderful thing, everybody's really excited about it. I don't believe there I don't believe there was a lot of awareness about the combined project with the large scale of apartments being put on there, which is why I started doing some of the research I did to prepare for this meeting. In total, just to sum up some of the primary considerations, there are only fourteen new spots being added into the existing main parking area in addition to the thirty surface for the resident, residents and the fourteen underground. So we've now taken away forty-four available spots in the current parking area to accommodate the planned number of cars that need to use that parking structure. My question that I wanted to make sure was being considered was the scale of this project. Development's great, there's a demand for apartments, no doubt about that. It, are we trying to fit ten pounds of sugar into a five pound bag? And so if we look at the number of spaces that are being created, was, or should there be a consideration of a smaller size project so that it doesn't encroach on this parking area? And I will just reiterate what I said before, that, that shared parking area, the commercial parking area has not expanded since Eagleview has continued to grow and expand. And it, it's true that in general terms, there, there's enough parking, but we like that. We don't ever want to get to the point where we're driving around, trying to find a parking space, and we've already experienced those conditions as my other resident commented about in high peak times during the summer, especially Friday night, Saturday night, when it's good weather out, people come in droves and there is not only no spots in the parking area, but that's when overflow starts to hit the streets. Uh, we'd like to keep it that way by making sure that we're not cutting it too close on the parking per planned development. I do want to also mention that when the Apartments on the Square project came forward four years ago, almost exactly the same resident concerns were expressed, that with all the residential uses now approved, the original concept of shared parking has and may become even more of an issue since the parking of the residential uses may impact the commercial uses and vice versa. So the lack of parking during town events, which is certainly a peak situation, becomes potentially even worse. So, thank you.
And any other comments?
Yeah, the only other comment that I would like to make is that in previous
I should just say for the record, just
Steve Bales. In previous supervisors' meetings from two thousand nine on, sometimes the board has been judicious in just taking a breath and stepping back and evaluating what some of the people have, have said. Sometimes things have, have been denied, and there've been some hooks that you guys have put in to ensure that some of these things are, are met. In reading previous meeting minutes, sometimes it just gets rubber stamped. And though, as I said, I'm, I believe wholeheartedly in, in what the Henkin Group is doing, I think that sometimes it's good to take a, a beat and, and really evaluate what this walking community is all about, because it is an asset to this township. A huge asset. And they should be commended for it, but I also think that we need to be fiscally responsible and safety responsible. Thank you.
I'm Tony Gorkin. I live at one nineteen Landavere Drive. I'm not actually a resident of Eagleview. However, I'd like to speak. I have some very negative feelings about this project based on what I'm seeing happen across Euclid Township. Specifically with disrespect and loss to our woodlands, our trees, our environmental, I mean, I understand we need all of these other considerations, but I also feel like the environmental considerations need to be taken into account. And for the trees, trees, shrubs, and other components of woodlands throughout Euclid Township are an important integral component of the township's natural heritage comprising the historic landscapes, scenic view sheds, passive recreational areas, and wildlife habit, habitat that uniquely characterize the township. High-rise apartment buildings such as this, I feel are more likely to make Euclid resemble West Whiteland. Crowded, urban, and unlovely. Despite what may have been said about the plan always including a building, the target site was designated to be used as a park and recreational area in two thousand twenty. I have copies of the plan. That's the last time I was in meetings and heard what the purpose of the use of this land would be. It's barely an acre. In part, that was done to compensate high-rate residents for the replacement of one of the most popular open spaces in Eagleview Center with a large high-rise building. The currently proposed project continues the replacement of open spaces with buildings, increasing the density of the area and damaging the leafy, nat- nature-friendly, lovely ambience of Eagleview that attracted residents in the beginning. The proposed market feels like a tease that obscure, obscures the fact that the primary purpose of this project is to use another piece of space to build more money-making apartments. There are more than a few vacancies in the wider Eagleview area where a market could go. Not to mention the immediate adjacent ACAC building, which is partially empty, inactive, without increasing the density of central Eagleview. In representations, in presentations I heard last a month ago, the claim was made that the project would activate an inactive area, but no steps were ever undertaken after the two thousand twenty plan to make the park a reality, the reality that it should have been. Not even put up a single bench. It doesn't need a market to activate it, build the park that was promised. This site is the only remaining tree-covered space within the heart of Eagleview Center. Proposed building would cut off the last remaining view and sense of open space from the center prized by the residents. And once again, of the areas as being requested to make the building even higher than ordinances would allow. The Euclid Township ordinances include rules to preserve woodlands and to avoid clearcutting. Permitted woodland disturbances on any water tract shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the total area of the woodland or hedge groves, hedge groves. Pardon me, I'm not a polished, and I'm a very nervous speaker. This project removes one hundred percent of the woodland. Ordinances specifically require replacement of removed trees with very specific requirements. When I asked last time whether had the Henkin residents said they would, they said they would not plant any compensational trees. Instead, going to an adjacent area that is actually required to be preserved because it's a wetland and not accessible and not useless, useful to residents. And I would add that what has happened in Eagleview two with the supposed planting of use, useless little trees in two feet of space next to the tall buildings and the road is not a sustainable practice for replacing trees. They're gonna, they're gonna die, they're gonna be removed. Oh, they dug up the sidewalk with their roots, they're not right. It's not proper urban tree management. The proposed plan continues the practice of clearcutting of mature trees. For example, what was done along Rice Boulevard to build Eagleview two. As I said, whatever trees have been added, they are planted in an unsustainable manner, and they will not survive, and they don't serve the purpose that we need trees for, for envi- environmental services. Trees and woodlands are more important to our healthy living. While they are important for the special feel and ambiance of Eagleview, for the view that we want from our windows, they have important value as a component of the environment. They provide environmental services important to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the township, contribute to better air quality, removing and storing carbon dioxide and greenhouse gases, producing oxygen, trapping and intercept, intercepting airborne partic- particulates, and by cooling the air, thereby reducing energy consumption in the summer. They reduce flooding, and I have walked during the construction of Eagleview two and seen the kind of flooding that has occurred. And that was still when it was under construction. Trees and woodland reduce soil erosion and damage to the land property by slowing and absorbing rainfall. They contribute to higher water quality. I know I sound like a bit of a tree nut. But the truth of the matter is, this is the last piece in the center of Eagleview. It was promised as a park, it should be made a park, and it should become a, a testament to our interest in environmental sustainability. Thank you. I apologize for my quavering.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Uh, my name is Alexa Manning. I live at eight oh five Raystone Lane in the township. Um, I concur with what Ms. Gorkin said, uh, but I want to address a couple of other issues that have to do with this project and what's going on in terms of construction in the township in light of our clean energy resolution, our clean energy municipal energy transition plan, and the local climate action plan that was completed in May of two thousand twenty-three. I just want to commend Henkin for building some lead structures, doing a passive house. I would personally like to see a lot more of that in this township, and that should be done on all levels. What really concerned me, I am a member of the Environmental Advisory Council, is that we came, when we did the resolution, and many townships in this area have resolutions for a hundred percent clean energy, that would be electricity by the year twenty thirty-five, and that's not too far away. That's all clean energy, folks. And by two thousand fifty is heat and transportation. The transportation sector in this township is our hugest, largest, almost, I would say, insur- The transportation sector in this township is our hugest, largest, almost, I would say insurmountable area. Uh, residential is about one quarter of our CO2 emissions and, uh, commercial is about one-third, a little bit more than that. And sewer, very tiny amount. Um, so what the LCAP said, and I just want to go over a few quick things. I don't want to bore everybody with every detail here, but this was a very comprehensive analysis of, uh, CO2 emissions and they came up with several scenarios. One is business as usual, and that includes all prospective building. You know, I know Hankin is doing more with Eagleview two and there's a phase three and four. I'm not really up to speed on that. We have seventy homes going in once the DEP gets approval on a Worthington roadside. That's all residential. We have warehouses going up and some other properties. So I'm, what I'm imploring, um, the people of this township and our leaders to think about is what is sustainable? Look at our existing vacant buildings. There, there are quite a few just in the Eagleview area. Or if I drive along where the warehouses are going up along, uh, what is that? Sherry Boulevard, they're empty spaces. We could repurpose those for a market. That ACAC daycare center I used to work for the YMCA, that's been vacant for a while. That could be expanded right there. We could save those woodlands. We could have a nice kind of outdoor seating area. I'm not, you know, I don't want to digress. But this is unusual. Well, they might take us to thirty-three percent of what our current CO2 emissions are. And that's not even looking at the projected building that's going to be going on the next five years here. Um, if we go to scenario two, that zero carbon electricity, um, action taken this year up to year two thirty-five, that would be a hundred percent grid electricity in both residential and commercial sectors. That's a huge thing. We need to be transitioning. It's hard enough with EVs, you know, in the transportation sector. And the last one, and this is what they recommended, and this kind of kept me awake more than one night. Aggressive reduction measures between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and fifty to meet the eighty-two, a hundred percent goals by two thousand and fifty. And they came into, you know, a number of recommendations. And we also have an energy transition plan. We're working with the steering committee to, you know, hopefully the township's doing a lot with their buildings. So it's, you know, I hope this isn't just aspirational. But this is our planet. This is our children. This is us, you know, um, you know, it's great. You have some affordable housing, but I read on your website, you still have two hundred people that are looking for affordable housing. I don't know what this building is going to be, you know, what, you know, I looked at all the medium apartment, you know, incomes, et cetera. I mean, um, amounts that people have to pay. Sorry, I'm getting late. Uh, rental fees. And I think a lot of people can't afford to live here. So I just think all of this needs to be taken into consideration. We need balance. You know, we're working on a woodlands ordinance and the township staff has been extremely helpful with updating our solar ordinance, et cetera. But this is the time, folks. What we're doing now is impacting people, not just next year or the year after, but in generations to come. And, um, let's really think intelligently, not just smarter about what we're doing. That's all I can say.
Thank you. I, I do, I do want to add one thing to your comment and you'd mentioned about the, you know, Hankin's, um, you know, work on, on with lead and, and passive housing and, and I, I don't want to undermine or, or limit or minimize the, the credit you get for, you know, doing that and actually doing the work and cooperating and agreeing to. As someone who was observing the board during, uh, Eagleview Village two, I, I, I will tell you that this board, um, the reason that there's passive housing is because they made it a priority and, and.
Thank you.
I think they're going to continue to, to push for things like that. And I, I, but the, you know, was, it was something that I observed where, where they really asked, you know, ask Hankin to, to reach beyond even lead and, and move into some of the more modern standards.
Yes. And thank you so much. That needs to be across the board and thank you for what you're doing. We need to do this on a major scale. We don't have a choice. I'm so sorry. We really don't. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any more comment?
Ben Reisler, David Court. Um, uh, one thing that I kept hearing in the discussion of the parking is you have a lot of extra spaces. But for the use with a, um, a, a food store, three hundred extra spaces on the other side of the parking lot are not useful. And particularly when you're going to have people, residents wanting to park there. Now, I don't live there. I will stop there. But if I know that I can't get parking spots where I can actually move my stuff from the store to the car, that's going to limit my desire to want to be there. And just with the other questions everybody was asking, I kind of heard that being kind of formulated, but it wasn't said. So I just wanted to say that, that parking there, it's not just the number of spots, but the access to the spots. That's very, very critical. And if the access can't be provided, access spots someplace else just doesn't matter. Something to think about.
Six oh three Huntington Drive. Um, to add to the gentleman's, uh, especially if people have parked far, they are going to bring their carts and there was going to be carts all over the parking lot everywhere where people are going to take their shopping. And I'm a hundred percent sure they are not going, they are not bringing those back. And, uh, this is going to be just litter of carts everywhere, every morning, and probably the employees or whatever have to bring them back. But they're, they're going to be there and they're probably going to occupy more parking spaces for other people to allow them to park. So that's.
Or any other comment? All right. So the board of supervisors has forty-five days to prepare a written decision. Uh, once, uh, issued an appeal, uh, may be filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Chester County by the applicant or parties within thirty days of the written decision. If no appeal is filed, the decision of the board comes final. And with that, we will close the record.